Item A, well, let's go on to item A, Business Loan Program Update. Uh, Wally Wallace, uh, Wally, are you on, please? Wally? Mike, is Wally not on?
I don't, I do not see him. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good. Um, it appears that Wally is not on. I know he is on, uh, Simpson Watch. Um, and I don't see him on here, but, uh, Mayor, if I may, uh, if he jumps on, we can go on to this, but, uh, I noticed that, uh, I wanted to introduce our new librarian, Jessica Huffman. She is, she is on. Um, she is, uh, a local gal and she's graciously accepted the job over at the library. Her first week was, uh, a giant snowstorm. Her second week was, uh, COVID and, and quarantines. Um, she jumped over and helped with the utility billing. Um, but, uh, welcome, Jessica.
Hi, Jessica, good job.
Uh, thank you.
Welcome.
Wel- welcome aboard, Miss Jessica.
Jessica.
Thank you, really, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Valentine, do you have any other staff reports that you would like to report on?
None at this, none at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, it looks like, Mayor, it looks like Wally might have joined us now. I see his initials on the screen.
Okay, Wally, uh, can you hear?
Yes, I'm in.
Okay, Wally, go ahead, go ahead and give us your update on the business loan, business loan program.
Okay, um, so far, we have had ten businesses that have applied for the program. I'm actually trying to pop it up real quick. Um, ten that have applied for the program, nine that, uh, were accepted, one that was turned down. Um, sorry, I'm still trying to pop it up. Sorry, I was just running a little late for this today. Um, so, so far, they've lent out forty-five thousand dollars, which means that we still have four hundred and fifty-five left to lend. Um, I was hoping to get more details on who we lent to, but, uh, unfortunately, my contact at the Carter Lending Source had to cancel our meeting earlier this week. Um, so I just have the basic numbers and, like I said, I'm struggling to pull them up right there. Um, but yeah, so far, we have only spent, what, uh, about five thousand dollars of the money that we put into it. Um, we do have all of the forty-five thousand dollars that went into the program into a fund that is controlled by the Carter Lending Source, but if not all of it is spent, they will return that to us. Um, but I do think that it is about time for another push to see if any other businesses want to take advantage of it. Um, we sent out several when it first came out, uh, shared it on social media and the paper did a little thing on it, but, um, I think there's some hesitance from some businesses even trying to take a loan right now, to be completely honest. Um, even though this is a zero percent interest, uh, so they don't owe anything on top of it, um, I think some people just aren't really too certain about the future and how much money they will be pulling in and may not want to do a loan, because that at least has been the, uh, comments of, uh, several folks that have called me about this program and them thinking about doing it or not. So, um, do you all have any specific questions?
Well, let's go ahead and get some questions from council. Uh, Mr. Williamson, do you have anything?
Uh, Mayor, thank you, I have none.
Okay, Ms. Gregor?
No, sir.
Mr. Schu?
No, none.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Ogletree?
No, I don't have any, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Goodall, don't, can't, can't forget you.
Yeah, there, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging my presence at this meeting. I appreciate that very much. Wally, you said that these are ten thousand dollar loans, correct?
Um, the, yes, so yeah, I actually told you the, wait, let me double check. I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble pulling it up.
They're ten, ten thousand dollars apiece, nine of them out, that's ninety thousand dispersed out of the amount, half a million, correct?
Yes, so yeah, the numbers that I, we're all a little lost.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to verify that. So, yeah, I agree, time for another push, but I understand people's hesitation on jumping in some loans right now, that's for sure. Thank you, Wally.
Yeah, no problem. And what I'm hoping is to do a piece on some of the businesses that have received the funds, um, to just say how it has helped them in the hopes that maybe some other people see that and want to see how it can help their business.
Uh, Wally, this call, uh, the first time around that you reached out, did you send out, uh, letters directly to the businesses? Or was it a, uh, radio newspaper?
I did.
How did, how did you get the word out?
I, I did, uh, a newspaper and social media, and we also did send letters out directly. However, that was the email that made it so that I couldn't send that many direct emails anymore. I got marked as spam and couldn't get into my email account for like three days. And so since then, we have, uh, created constant contact accounts, um, that will allow us to send that many emails to that many people without being blocked out. Um, so when we send a follow-up, we'll have to do it with constant contact, but I just wanted to note that. I see Ruck has his hand up.
Eli, uh, you know, I know that, uh, would you maybe be willing to do a segment with him, uh, like he did with me a while back?
Yeah, I've done it with, uh, Wally already, yes.
Now, if you want to do another one, uh, that might be another avenue to try to get the word out. Okay.
That, that is deferred for six months, is that not correct?
Yes, it is.
All right, I think that's an important, uh, important point to push on this, because it gives people till into the springtime to start looking at having to make payments. So I think that's important with, or it gives people a little hope that by spring, things should be in better shape.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Okay. Any, uh, any other comments from council at this time?
No, Mr. Mayor, just, uh, Wally, if you can call the radio station anytime and, uh, we can set up an interview for, uh, next week.
Sounds great, I really appreciate it, Eli.
Okay.
I know, Mayor?
Go ahead, go ahead, Ms. Ogletree.
I'm sorry, excuse me, I, I read too that there's a state program that's coming into place to assist restaurants with outdoor, to do improvements for outdoor, um, dining. So that's something else that, that if Wally, I'm sure you're aware of that, but that's something that would be good for our restaurants to know of.
Totally. I, I was actually speaking with one restaurant earlier today about that and then am planning on sending that out to all of our restaurants here by the end of this week. Um, I think they just announced that on, uh, Monday, that, uh, those funds are now available.
That's all, thank you.
Any, any other questions? Okay, we will move on to item four, petitions or communications, uh, oral or written. Item, uh, four A, and, uh, this is the new Alk mine. And, uh, just like to do just an introduction here of the people that we have on board. Uh, we, we have, uh, Mark Gray, who is the CEO of Allegiance Coal. Uh, we also have, uh, I'm not sure if Mr. Head is in here tonight, uh, but Jeff Weiss, uh, from Jeff, from Weiss Capital is on tonight. And I'm going to, uh, he's going to give, they're going to give us an update on what is happening with the mine. And, uh, we'll turn it over to, uh, Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, want to take it from here? It's going to take a while, because he's got, you know, it's, it's going to take a bit, and then we'll have questions and answers from council. So we're going to be here for a bit, I think, with our presentation, with this presentation. Mayor, with us.
Thank you, um, Mayor Rico, and, uh, greetings to, um, to council members. Um, yes, my name is Mark Gray. I'm the CEO and Chairman of Allegiance Coal. Uh, we are a, um, Australian-based company, uh, listed on the Australian, uh, Security Exchange, uh, the ASX. Uh, and, um, um, as a company, uh, my focus is, uh, developing and operating, um, steel-making coal mines, coking coal mines, and we have, we very much have a North American focus. Um, Mayor Rico, I wonder, uh, the presentation that you have, it, or is there any way that I can post it, uh, for the benefit of those at least who are on this, um, uh, on this, uh, uh, screen? And, uh, I know it would be impossible for those who have dialed in, but...
I, um, I, I don't have that capability. Mike, can you?
Audra should be able to make a screen shareable.
Who, who's, uh?
We can't hear you.
Who's hosting?
I'm sorry. If Audra could, can you share the, your screen there? You go, whoa, look at that. Mr. Gray, you're muted.
Okay, gotcha. Um, all right.
I think Audra is trying to share your screen.
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm happy to talk generally, but I think, um, you know, because, um, both, um, Mayor Rico and, um, and Mike Valentine have received, uh, this presentation, uh, twice. Um, uh, but I think it would be good to, uh, to give, to deliver the story to, uh, the councillors, uh, at this opportunity. Um...
Mr. Gray, did you get an invitation to be the presenter?
Okay, um, Chair? I'm working on trying to pull it up too. Yeah, okay.
Council was, uh, emailed this presentation also in a PDFs, just so, um, if we can get through this technical situation here.
Situation here. Let me, um, let me, um, let me continue nonetheless. Uh, um, you know, if we can get the presentation up, that'd be wonderful. If not, um, you'll all have the opportunity to, you know, to per- peruse it, uh, review it, uh, and, and I'm, I'm available, uh, for conversation discussion, and, and so is, uh, Lewis Head. Uh, Lu- Lewis is, um, on this, um, meeting. Lewis is, is a, is a current employee of the mine and has been, uh, since it was in production in two thousand and twelve. And, um, and we are retaining Lewis in a Finance Administration, uh, Surface Operations role. Uh, and, uh, he, he, he resides in, um, Trinidad, uh, so he, he's available, uh, also, uh, you know, to discuss aspects, um, of the project as it goes forward. But let, let me pick up from where I left off. Um, so as a company, uh, Allegiance Coal, uh, has two projects. We have a project in, um, northwest British Columbia, uh, also a coking project, uh, and it's going through the permitting phase here in B.C., and I live there, northwest B.C. Uh, I'm actually, uh, currently sitting in, in, uh, the Hotel Denver Airport, I'm making my way home. Um, but, um, uh, that is, um, our development project, our greenfields project. And as of last week, uh, my company completed the acquisition of the new Alk mine. Uh, you, uh, I'm sure, uh, the councillors, uh, and, uh, Mayor Rico are, uh, more familiar with that mine than I am. Um, but, um, what I, what I can say is that, um, you know, based on the studies that we undertook last year, and, and I undertook, uh, a full feasibility study, followed by two optimization studies, uh, to gain confidence around the, um, economic viability, uh, of this mine. Uh, it sat dormant, uh, you know, other than when a Klein Mining Corporation came here in two thousand and ten. It sat dormant for, you know, a long time, uh, because most people who looked at it, uh, did not believe that it could operate, um, as an export mine. Uh, you know, since Pueblo Steel Mill, um, blast furnace, uh, closed down, uh, and the long rail distance to get to the east coast, uh, steel mills, um, the domestic opportunity for this coking coal or steel-making coal, uh, is somewhat challenging. So my attitude and, and, and what my shareholders have mandated me to do is to develop, uh, steel-making coal projects that, um, are exported on the seaborne market. And that, that, that is our, um, our purpose in life as a company. Uh, so I needed to be convinced that this asset could be economic on the seaborne market before I committed, uh, my company's funds to acquire it. And so I completed a series of studies last year, independent, um, engineering, uh, environmental, technical studies, and, uh, and the, the short of, the sh- the short conclusion of those studies is that, uh, this asset can be economic very much indeed. And, um, um, it, it relied very heavily on being able to negotiate attractive rail rates, um, uh, moving the coal, uh, from Jansen loadout just south of, um, of the city of Trinidad to either the port of Houston or, or the coal ports in New Orleans. And I was fortunate in having two railways competing for the, for the work. BNSF, who owned the line, all the way south, uh, southeast, and, and Union Pacific, who have, uh, hundred percent sharing rights on that track. So as a consequence of the competitive bidding, um, I was able to get extremely attractive rail rates. And, uh, so then it came down to, okay, well, at what cost can you mine the coal, uh, wash it and deliver it to Jansen? And, um, the mine plan we developed, uh, you know, based on the geology that exists there, uh, indicated to us that, you know, we could be a very, very low-cost producer. So the net result of the study is that we can load a vessel, uh, in Houston for around about, um, seventy-five U.S. dollars per metric ton. And whilst that number might not mean a lot to you without the benefit of the presentation, what I can tell you is that that cost would put this mine in the lowest cost quartile of all the steel-making coal that reaches the seaborne market every year, of which there is around three hundred million tons. Um, so ultimately, we will get this mine to two million tons. And that two million tons of the three hundred would sit in the lowest cost quartile. So it is a very low-cost producer. Uh, so, you know, it's a misconception by people who have looked at it previously, but for some reason, the, the, the previous, um, interested parties just didn't go through that exercise of an independent feasibility study. And it costs several hundred thousand dollars to do that, so you can't blame them for not doing that. But that's the benefit of proper, um, business, uh, analysis. So, so I am pleased to report that, that this mine, uh, can compete, um, very well as far as cost is concerned, on delivering, uh, new Alk coking coal, steel-making coal to the seaborne market. And that is our strategy. Um, so, so having, you know, reached that decision, um, earlier this year, um, we then went about completing the acquisition, and, and it was a fairly complex exercise, because the ownership of that mine is somewhat complicated, uh, complex with companies in Canada and ownership in America, and it, it certainly took quite some time. But, but all that aside, the asset is now one hundred percent owned by my company, Allegiance Coal. Um, so what are we doing now? Um, uh, I tabled, uh, today with, uh, Mayor Rico and, uh, Mike Valentine, uh, just a, a one-page, high-level, um, timeline and critical path. Uh, so this month of November, uh, myself and, and Jeff, uh, Jeff Weiss, who is, um, who is our PR advisor here in Colorado, um, uh, have, um, uh, have been engaging with key stakeholders, and we did this, uh, three months ago as well, uh, including, uh, our first meeting with Mayor Rico and Mike Valentine. Uh, and we are expanding our engagement to, you know, all corners of the community, uh, so that we can share information about the project, about our plans, take advice, take criticism, you know, take on board, uh, what people think, and, you know, and adjust our mine plans, our execution, you know, to, to accommodate community concerns. Here we go, particular work.
All right, sorry about that, Mark, it took a minute to figure it out. Just give me directions to where you want to go.
Yeah, just move on, please, that's wonderful. Uh, thank you. Keep on scrolling, thank you. I've given the background and, and, and council can read this at your own leisure. Uh, stop, please. Um, and, and I'm just going to park where I was before and, and, and just talk to this slide very quickly. Um, and, um, you know, any of you may already know this, but you will be surprised, um, how many do not. Uh, but coal, uh, comes in many characteristics and many forms. And the coal that is typically mined in Colorado and Utah is thermal coal, which is used for, for power generation. It's a bituminous, very high-quality, high-heat content coal. And, and that is what goes into thermal coal power generation. And we know, uh, that, uh, it, it is Colorado government policy, uh, that thermal coal power generation is being phased down over the next decade. New Alk and, and the, the, the coals in the, in the, in the, uh, basin of the Purgatory Valley, um, have coking coal characteristics, also a bituminous coal, but of an older age. And this coal has been, literally has been cooked in the ground, because it has been in the ground longer. And it has formed coking coal properties, which are very attractive, uh, to the production of blast furnace steel, what Pueblo used to be before it closed down in the nineteen eighties. Um, and, um, uh, it is really important to emphasize this, certainly, you know, to those within government, that this is not about thermal coal power generation. This is about the production of blast furnace steel. And even though Pueblo has a steel mill, a, an electric arc furnace steel mill, electric arc is, is fed by scrap metal. And by the very nature of the raw material, an electric arc furnace cannot produce high-quality steel. You know, the type of steel that is required in the production of automobiles, um, solar panels, wind turbines, real high-quality, exceptionally hard steel. Here we have some examples of that. Blast furnace, uh, sorry, electric arc can't do that. And, and, and that's why blast furnace steel, uh, remains, uh, the main producer of steel globally. It represents seventy percent of steel globally with electric arc furnace supplying thirty percent, and that thirty percent is to low-grade steel. I just wanted to emphasize that point to the extent that councillors were not clear on it. But new Alk is a coking coal, and it will be exported on the seaborne market to global steel mills. And our target market will be Asia. It will be Japan, South Korea, and India, because that represents seventy percent of steel demand. That is the long-term market. The steel market in the U.S. and Europe is, is declining, because these are industrialized countries and they don't have the same demand of steel as third-world countries do, in particular, India, who is going through a very steady period of industrialization over the next two decades. Okay, can we move on, please? Thanks. So, um, I don't really need to dwell on this. Um, if you've been up, um, Highway Twelve and driven past the mine, uh, it will look, uh, all too familiar to you, but maybe I'll just highlight a couple of things here. Um, the first, um, picture, uh, center-left, the underground pearl portal entries. So there you have, uh, your entries into the underground mine. Um, the left U-shaped image is the ventilation, so the air is, is forced in and it's, and it's sucked out to, 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 um, get oxygen, uh, to the coal base. Um, and the center portal there, uh, is where mineral materials enter, exit the mine. And on the right-hand side, you'll see, um, a, a line, a ruler line, like, running out of the mine, that's a conveyor belt. And then that conveyor belt, uh, connects to, if you look to the large image, the new Alk Mine Complex, uh, you'll see a stacker, uh, which runs out into the middle and it drops coal on the ground. That then feeds wash plant, which is the brown building. And when we say wash, we, we're not putting any noxious chemicals into this. All we're doing is, is separating rock from coal, so it's, it's dense media. You feed the material into a, into a pond, uh, which has chemicals added to create density. Uh, the rock heavy, it sinks to the bottom, coal floats on the top, and it gets flushed out. And then it's stored in those silos where we will load, initially trucks to Jansen, and then, um, once we get the rail back down, uh, up the valley, then it'll, it'll load direct into railcars. Okay, moving on, please? Um, well, as I mentioned before, um, this is our market. Uh, we have two, perhaps three, uh, port options, um, Houston, um, inside the Gulf, but I'm actually leaning towards New Orleans. It's a little bit further away, uh, but the rail rate that I get there, uh, to New Orleans with Union Pacific is not much more than Houston, uh, and the port rate at New Orleans is significantly less than, less than Houston. So, so overall, the economics are quite similar. Uh, that, and I, that'll enable, enables us to get access to European markets and these, and, and of course, Brazil. Brazil has a big demand for steel, although it's, it's a volatile buyer. One year it's strong, and the next year it's not. What I can, um, also say, and it, it's not highlighted here, but the Asian steel mills, they send vessels around the Cape, uh, of, um, of, uh, the Cape Horn every month. There's multiple vessels, uh, large, what we call cape-sized vessels, a hundred and fifty thousand ton, two hundred thousand ton vessels. They send those vessels around the Cape every month, uh, to, um, uh, to Hampton Roads, uh, 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 off, off, uh, off the coast of Virginia to buy, um, coking coal from Sep- Central Appalachia. And, and those vessels also port the New Orleans and Mobile, uh, to buy, uh, coking coal from Alabama. Uh, so getting to New Orleans, uh, gives me direct access to those vessels. They already come around the Cape, and then they make it to Asia. Okay, moving on, please? So this is where I left off, uh, the, uh, conversation, uh, before the presentation came up. Um, this graph is a cost curve of all of the, um, steel-making coal that hits the seaborne market every year. Now, this is a two thousand and eighteen cost curve. Um, the two thousand and nineteen and, and one is, is, is almost identical. Um, and, um, I use this one because it costs twenty thousand dollars to get it updated. So, uh, and because it's the same, um, I've used this one. Um, so the bottom line is the, is the tons of coal, um, the bottle act- The bottom axis is so you what you see is there is about three hundred and twenty million tons of steelmaking coal hit the seaborne market in uh two thousand eighteen. And the left axis is the cost per unit, the cost per ton of coal in U S dollars and metric ton, not not short ton as you as you typically think. And as you can see, based on our feasibility study that we finished earlier this year, the New Oak Mine would sit just in on the inside of the lowest cost quartile. And what I what I find interesting about this cost curve is where the majority of U S warm open coal sits on it. And as you can see, to to the far right, the top end of the cost curve, the vast majority of U S steelmaking coal, which is the light green, is in the high end of the cost curve. And what this means is that um as coking coal and steelmaking coal prices come down, then all of a sudden, as we've seen in the last six to nine months, all of this production becomes immediately uneconomic. And what that means is that mine, those mines go on care and maintenance. What that means is that all of the staff are laid off. And that means poverty. That means homes are destabilized and income is lost. And this is the story of U S steelmaking coal on the seaborne market, which is why I was so cautious, you know, to understand the economics about this project before we committed to buying it. Because I'm not in to putting mines into care and maintenance, taking them out, sending workers home, then trying to give them a job again. That's not, that's not how I want to live my life, nor I'm sure is that the way that the workers live their life. So so I, you know, this is very encouraging. I think it's a very important message to councillors and to the community that, you know, that run properly, this mine should be at the lower end of the cost curve and will be able to withstand the volatility of prices. Okay, as prices come down, the high cost production disappears. And very quickly, once that supply disappears from the market, supply and demand balance again and prices recover. And and that is very much the cycle of all commodities. And 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 commodities is a cyclical industry, but it's driven by this, you know, simple function of supply and demand. In a in a low demand environment, prices go down, some supply disappears, supply and demand find an equilibrium again and prices recover. I mean, that that is the cycle. So it's so important to be in that lower quarter. If you're in the lowest half, you're safe. But it's even better to be in the lowest quarter. Okay, move on, please. So this is is what mine, I I've just got a slide here of some very high level um economic factors in relation to this mine. First and foremost, the the New Oak asset and also the neighboring Lawrence River Canyon, which we have also acquired, contains seven hundred and fifty million metric tons of coking coal. This is big. You know, by international standards and and by by even more so by U S standards, this is a very significant coal resource. So its potential mine life is, I mean, I couldn't even imagine. It's it's, you know, it's fifty to a hundred years so long as there is a continuing demand for blast furnace steel. It's a low cost producer. I've spoken to that point. That means we'll be a stable employer, all right? Our margins might squeeze in a low price environment, but we can keep the mine operating and we can keep the staff gainfully employed and we can pay our taxes. At peak production, and it'll take us about three years to grow to peak production, we'll have three hundred full time employees and an additional one hundred and fifty contract services. So a total workforce in the order of five hundred. And as Mia Rico quite rightly pointed out to me, that if you're allowed, you know, spouse and one or two children for every worker, you're looking at immediate population growth over the next three years of something in the order of two thousand. And then, you know, I don't need to talk to, you know, the the where the money, where the costs are paid and where the taxes are paid. And they are significant sums. So it is a significant asset. And if we execute correctly, it will make a significant contribution. But it will call on the resources of the community and it will require a collaborative approach with yourselves, the county commissioners and other key stakeholders in the community, you know, to ensure that the influx of people, the, you know, the increase in demand for services doesn't, you know, flood the the community as it as it exists today. And so so, you know, we 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 take this very seriously. Move to the move to my last slide, please, and then we can talk on a lot of these things. So this is the this is our timeline. As I mentioned at the start, Jeff and I and Lewis and are, you know, widening our community engagement. And this is a wonderful opportunity to, you know, now to present to council itself. The probably the three most critical items on my to do list. First of first, of course, to to start to look at the council of our employees. And I'll talked talked about how we make up our employees in a minute. We'll be trucking coal in the first two years from our wash plant down to Janson Lowdown. So there's obviously going to be issues there with trucks going along Highway twelve. That needs to be focused on, discussed, reviewed and 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 agreed on. And we need to extend the water pipeline that runs up the Purgatory Valley. It it's short by about a mile and a half to our mine. And we need to get water to the mine. And that's an issue, you know, which we're discussing with Mike as well. And then there's services. And by services, I don't mean services necessarily to the mine, but the extent to which the influx influx of of our workers is going to put pressure on existing services. You know, healthcare, education, schools, you know, these these workers will bring children to the community. And and then there's so many different aspects there. So from operationally, we'll start refurbishing the mine and the equipment in the first quarter of next year. We need to do an upgrade on the wash plants as well. And and a small drill probe program we need to get some coal quality data for the steel mills who we want to sell our coal to. So the workforce will start to arrive in March, April. And we have broken this up into two phases to allow infrastructure to be ready for the influx. So phase one is is what we call pre rail. It's it's the period during which we truck the coal from the wash plant to Janson Lowdown. And that will involve initially a workforce of just fifty, forty actual mine workers, operators, and about ten fixed overhead, salaried staff, fixed overhead. And the target date for that is June, July. That'll produce something like thirty five thousand tons per month, metric tons of coal. And then in six months following, we'll then begin to get ready to introduce another forty mine operators and double our production to seventy thousand tons a month. That equates to fossil minus eight hundred thousand tons per annum. And that's what we'll haul on the road from the wash plant to Janson Lowdown. And we'll stay at that rate of production until we get the railway track relayed on the existing bed. And and that'll take us about two years to do that. And once that's done, then, you know, we will gradually ramp up again to, you know, to our target production of about two and a half billion tons. And then that that gets us up to three hundred and fifty full time workforce. So in the first phase, we had around about ninety people arriving. Ninety workers arrived. I mean, there are five, five or six people there already, so let's say eighty five. And a lot of them will have families. So that's the immediate focus is is how to to how to integrate those people into the community with housing and schooling and 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 so on. And then that gives us about two years after, two years from July next year, about two years to prepare for the next period of, you know, of ramp up. Okay. That that Mia is the is the presentation as you have seen it.
Any questions from council? Mr. Williamson, you want to start? See if you have any questions for Mr. Gray.
I do, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time, Mr. Gray. We we really appreciate it. I I definitely understand the difference between coking coal and fuel coal. But as we move forward uh in in uh into the future, it seems to me that the political nature of of the world we're living in is more and more against fossil fuels. And um that that makes a lot of industries tough to operate in. And I understand steel is directly related to a lot of the renewable energies that we're making. But what is the the future outlook in your opinion? What is the plan to navigate those obstacles? I mean, can you speak to that any at all as far as sustainability of a of a viable economy?
So um so so coking coal, in the coking process, coking coal is not necessarily used for heat. It is because it does create heat. But um um, you know, in in simple terms, a blast furnace steel i- is made firstly by a coking, you know, coking coal, just like the coke ovens, the old beehive ones you see in Coldell. Coke ovens now are a lot more sophisticated than that. But you coke it, you turn it into a piece of coke and you put that into a blast furnace. And then you actually, with iron ore and a bit of lime, and then you actually add heat separately to the blast furnace, all right? So to inflame the coke and the iron ore is actually you know, another form of heat. It could be natural gas. It could be coal. It can be non coking coal that provides that heat content. So so, you know, the question is, what is going to replace coke, which is a fossil, from the steel, from blast furnace steel production? I mean, there and there is technology that developed. Hydrogen can reduce the iron ore to to a molten form. And and that's something which well, it's been explored by companies. I'm not aware of any other. But, you know, certainly for the for the time being, the production of steel is is driven by two critical minerals, which are coking coal and iron ore. I mean, that that and that is it until there is a replacement for coking coal and indeed iron ore, because they're both, you know, minerals. And you're taking it from the earth and they're not sustainable theoretically.
Right. Okay, um, thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Ms. Gregor, do you have any questions?
Well, yes. Thank you, Mr. Gray, so much. I'll I'll let Frank talk after I'm finished, but you're okay?
Yeah, I'm fine. Go ahead.
It's very interesting. Your presentation was really interesting. And you were right about Trinidad having a huge, strong history with the coal mining. You know, those of us that are natives, our our families came here to work these mines. So it's it's an industry that's very close to our hearts. My question to you is, what can? The first thing that I saw in your presentation is the housing situation here in Trinidad. For some reason or other, it looks like we have a housing shortage right now that happened within the last six months. So my question is, number one, what can we do for you to make you successful? And number two, have you thought about the housing situation for your employees?
I think about it every day. It's one of the things that keeps me awake at night.
Me too.
And and I'm just wanting to share some sleepless nights with yourselves. But, you know, it's why we've staged the production. The the fact that the rail, we need to get the rail down, you know, also it makes sense to do that. But, you know, after meeting with Mia Rico and and Mike Valentine, you know, this morning, you know, we've, you know, we've got a couple of items on the critical path, one of which is housing. And, you know, we 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 will start engaging and and we have until or we have to a limited extent, but that engagement is still very early. But, you know, we certainly do need to do some quick analysis on what those options are. I mean, there are some short short term options. You know, there are new apartments being built and and my company can take a lease over those for a period to, you know, to provide interim, a short term accommodation to 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 workers. And perhaps workers will enjoy that accommodation and at a point in time can stay there at their own cost, of course. But, you know, it it's it's on the critical path. And I'm sorry, I don't have any answers at this point in time. But as I said, it is something that we need to address immediately and we'll do it. And I did, we did agree with Mia Rico and Mike Valentine that we would have monthly updates, virtual updates in this COVID time in person when we can to update council on our progress in this regard and get guidance, direction, suggestions, once again, good or bad, about how we're going about it. But I'm sorry, you know, we just completed the acquisition last week, so.
No, I understand. And it's just, I in my own mind, trying to figure out what we could do as a city to help you out with that. Because it came upon, the housing shortage came upon us rather quickly, actually. And so, you know, I'm I'm just trying to figure out how we, as a city, can help you out.
And I appreciate it. And I very much appreciate that. And, you know, as I said, I think maintaining monthly contact, certainly, you know, formal monthly contact or organized monthly contact in an informal way will 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 identify issues in those conversations. And I'm sure Mia Rico and and Mike and other people, we 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 agree that we should get other people involved on these monthly calls, working group, if you like, so that, you know, someone can put their hand up and say, okay, I know how to deal with this and they go away and and, you know, and finesse that particular issue through and 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 get it solved. I think, you know, getting a getting this getting a process in place first and foremost is is a good start. But, you know, we will be applying a lot of elbow to this. And, you know, we will make progress. And, you know, we will make progress.
I'm sure you will. Thank you.
Mr. Chu, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I just think it's really good for this community that the minds coming. And I'd like to thank you for all the work and the presentation you did. And I think it'll be great. I think the city, everybody will be glad to help to work with it, to get it going. Again, thank you.
Mr. Dipolo?
Yes, Mr. Gray, thank you. We appreciate your different approach in the revitalization of Trinidad and our economy. I just had maybe just one question. What condition was the wash plant, the existing wash plant? In what type of undertaking is involved in the operations of reopening the wash plant that's been dormant for a long span of time? And the projected cost to lay rail down per mile?
Yeah. A couple of questions there. The wash plant's generally in good condition. You know, we have some rehabilitation to do to it. We're going to replace, we're redesigning it slightly. We're adding, adding another circuit to it. It's a, forgive the technical speed, but it's a two-circuit wash plant, which, which is problematic. It needs three circuits, it needs a circuit to deal with finer material. So we're going to add that. So we will be spending something in the order of five million dollars on upgrading the wash plant. And then the other main capital cost is refurbishing the equipment. There's a lot of equipment there. It's in really good condition. I think the altitude, the low humidity of the, of the region, you know, means that it hasn't really rusted. So we'll, you know, we'll have to replace hydraulics and electrics, you know, chuck some paint on it, and all those machines will be ready to go. We also have to bring them into compliance. There's, you know, some high levels of safety compliance for these machines have, has, has been legislated over the last few years. So it's a bit of money on that to bring it up to, to new compliance levels. And this is just general mine maintenance. And it's, it's not a significant capital number. It's probably in the order, you know, to get to that phase one production, excluding working capital, you know, we're looking at probably about fifteen million US dollars. And now that, that to me is a small number. If we were to build this mine today from greenfields, from grassroots, it's two hundred and fifty million dollars, right? So just put that into perspective. As far as the rail's concerned, it's quite interesting. We've got about three different consultants to walk, walk their track and give us quotes. They all came back with a different distance, ranging from twenty-one miles to thirty-seven to twenty-seven miles. But anyway, the cost of, cost of putting the rail down is probably between twenty-five and thirty million US dollars. Yeah, the bridges and the culverts need a bit of work. And, yeah, I mean, you know, the cost of, cost of materials is not too bad, it's really the cost of labor, which is, is the most expensive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Ogletree?
Thank you, Mark Gray. This is a fascinating presentation. I've, I've learned a lot. I never really understood the difference between the types of coal. And I'm really appreciative of your spending the time with us to discuss that. I think the thing that I'm most curious about is the workforce. And are you bringing, are you planning to bring them here from Australia? Or where will they come from?
Certainly not Australia. You don't want too many strange accents. Probably already enough. An actual fact, that's a very good question, very good question. The majority of our workforce will come from the coal mines in Colorado and Utah. And, and given that they are thermal coal mines and are closing down, I will have little problem in attracting, you know, regional labor to, to the community and to repopulate the community with, you know, with, with skilled coal mine workers. But what is critical to the success of this mine is the system of work which we will deploy underground, very different to what you see in the underground coal mines in Colorado and Utah, dictated by the, by the height of the coal seam. Coal seams in the Raton Basin versus, you know, on the Western Slope, Colorado and in Utah, the coal seams are a lot thinner here. In Colorado, in the Western Slope, in Utah, you know, you're looking at, you know, six, seven, eight-foot coal seams. Here we have, you know, three, four, five-foot coal seams. We operate different equipment. You operate diesel equipment in Colorado coal mines. Because of the seam height, because it's a lot lower, you can't have diesel fumes floating around underground in a lower environment. So all of our equipment is electric. So all of our machines have a big fat electrical cable behind it. So in order to operate a machine like that safely, you have to know the system of work. And it needs to be secondhand. So we, so my management team, who are based in central Appalachia, East Kentucky and West Virginia, very, very experienced operators, coal mining engineers, one of whom will be the, will be the boss, the chief operating officer, Ayman Mahan. And Ayman has met Mayor Rico and Mike Valentine on their first visit. Ayman was supposed to be on this trip with me, but unfortunately he contracted COVID three weeks ago. So he stayed at home to recover, rehabilitate and isolate. But Ayman will be moving to Trinidad and with his wife in the next, you know, six weeks. So they will bring a following, a nucleus of workers who have worked with them for years. So I think the makeup of the workforce, roughly, the production workforce will be about thirty percent central app coal miners and about seventy percent, maybe one-third, two-thirds, regional coal miners. And we will train those coal miners into our systems of work. But certainly no Australians. They, they don't understand.
Darn the luck, I love.
I'm not Australian. I'm a New Zealander.
You know, I'm, I'm sure you have heard this, but at one point in time, there are more than twenty languages spoken in Trinidad when, because people came here from all over the world. But I'm, I'm thrilled to hear that, that people who already are trained in this field will have employment in our area. That, I'm, I'm thrilled. The other question I had is, what kind of housing do they typically need? Are there, are they single-family housing? Is it multifamily housing? Or just so that we're aware of what that need is?
Yes. So, so our production roster is very much a, and this is a philosophy which I subscribe to as a company CEO, chairman, is it's very much, it's a family business. So our workers will come to work and they'll go home at night. Most mine sites operate fly in, fly out. You go in for two weeks, you come out for two weeks. And, 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 you know, I am vehemently opposed to that type of cycle because, you know, it destroys the fabric of a family. So the people that will be coming will be coming and they will be staying. And they will be predominantly families. So the housing will be, you know, predominant, will need to accommodate, you know, will be two, three-bedroom housing. All right?
Okay. That's all wonderful. Thank you so much. Those are the initial questions that I have.
Mr. Gray?
So, go along with everyone else said, thank you very much, sir, for coming to this community and this opportunity that you're bringing here to bring back a lifestyle that's been here for generations. But to offer something to possibly keep the youth here that have moved away seeking employment elsewhere, and that leads into my question. We've talked about the skilled labor and professional miners that'll be coming in. What kind of jobs will be offered to the unskilled labors or people from this community, the youth and whatnot? Will, will there be some jobs in that field that'll be available?
All of these, all of the production jobs. And the production jobs, you know, represent ninety percent of the workforce and ten percent is fixed overhead, you know, the, you know, the salaried staff. But ninety percent of the workforce is production-orientated. And you, you don't need, you know, your skill is gained on the job. You, you need, you need training in health and safety, in, in, in operating underground environments, operating machinery, just like, you know, an open pit mine. You need the same level of training and that can be gained, you know, through trade certificates. And this, we've already had a conversation with the, with the college about developing training programs for, you know, for local kids to leave school and they can go in and do a trade, which is appropriate, provides appropriate skills to operate in an underground coal mine. So, yeah, I mean, it's, in the course of time, you know, I hope that, you know, we can create this conveyor belt, you know, ready supply of labor. And, and over time, you work your way up from, you know, being, working in a shift as a, as a hand, and then you'll start operating machines. And then sooner or later, you might work, you know, step up to a foreman and chief superintendent and, you know, and, and have a career in the job. And these are very well, they're very highly paid jobs. This is not low-cost labor. I mean, these people, our workers are paid very, very well. Very well, indeed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mark, you know, one thing that you might cover a little bit, and I brought this up this morning because we talked about the possibility and down the road of the future of the Laurencito project, that you may just kind of briefly give a rundown to council of what that may look like?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we also acquired coal leases in Laurencito Canyon from, from the Hill family. You know, Bobby Hill owns the ranch there. And the mineral rights under Bobby's property are owned by a partnership of families, including the Hill family and the Megson family. And, and, and there are lots of people out there in that partnership. So we've acquired those leases. There's a coal seam there called the Primero, aptly, given, you know, the predominance of that name in the valley. And, yeah, it, 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 it contains probably the best coking coal I have seen in the valley. Certainly the coal quality is better than New Op. It's premium product. It will, it will command premium and a lot of interest on the steelborn market. So it's my intention to, to get that asset into production as soon as I can. And it'll form part of that phase one. I may take less of the New Op Blue seam, which we start mining, and put more of Laurencito because, you know, I want to be selling a higher quality product. But that is also on the fast track for me. I have to get that re-permitted, unlike New Op, which is fully permitted for production. I do have to get the underground mine at Laurencito re-permitted. It was permitted ten years ago and the permit elapsed. And there is a surface mining permit in Laurencito Canyon, which is still in good standing. So DRMS and, and our consultants tell me that all I need to do is apply for a revision of the existing permit. And I can get the Laurencito underground re-permitted and I'll get that into production.
Okay, so I guess the question is, is, you know, down the road, when that's in full production, it could be, you know, five years down the road, you may be looking or more additional employees, which would add, you know, to your full workers?
So, so, you know, so employee, employees is, was, you know, summarized in the, in the previous slide. Employee numbers are dictated by the Ryanville. And whether, you know, ultimately what you will see is not a New Op, single New Op mine. Certainly, in, in my watch, I'm going to create three coal mines, three different coal mines, all feeding that single wash plant. Will be in the Blue seam, which is the seam that you saw where the portals were entry. It's a shallow seam at surface. There'll be the Primero mine and the Laurencito Canyon of Bobby Hill's property. And then I plan to reopen the, the original coal seam, the Ellen. The Ellen is what was mined for thirty years. And the Ellen mine has supplied Pueblo with steel for thirty years. And there's no coincidence that the bottom seam of the New Op coal mine was the coal seam that was mined. And all the eight seams above it were ignored. And that comes down to the simple fact that the Ellen seam has the best coal quality. So, you know, somewhere along our timeline, three years, maybe five years, I want to open up the Ellen and develop another mine there. And, and, and the combination of these three mines will get us to, you know, two and a half million tons. And then, dare I say it, the Frederick Mine is right next door to Laurencito Canyon. Dying to have a look at that property as well. You know, the Frederick Mine was the biggest mine, has the longest history. A lot of that coal is still there. You know, but, you know, I have enough to deal with for the time being. But, you know, the next CEO of this company, you know, will, will, will look to extend and, you know, we, we hope to, we hope to get this whole valley operating again, not just what we're doing, but there, there are many other coal deposits which can be developed.
You know, you mentioned the Frederick Mine, just some history, my father worked at that mine and retired from that Frederick Mine until they closed down, so just behind that. Mr. Bell, have you come up with any other questions for Mr. Gray?
Not at this time, Mayor. Just look forward to, to working. There's some challenges ahead, but we're up to it. We'll get it done.
Yeah. Mr. Gray, thank you for your presentation and thank you for coming to Trinidad and Los Angeles County to help with our local economy. It'll be a big boost, something we've been needing for some time. And really, really are happy that your company is here. So looking forward to working with you and going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Rico. And can I just, in, in closing, can I just say that I was fortunate, Jeff and I were fortunate to have a tour of your gorgeous city with St. Michael's this afternoon. And it really is absolutely beautiful. I just, you know, we, we're just gobsmacked at, you know, the history of the buildings, the beauty of the buildings and the redevelopment, refurbishment programs which are taking place. And, you know, so excited to, you know, for my company, my shareholders who will come and visit, no doubt, in the course of time, but the workers, you know, to be a part of your community. So thank you very much, councillors.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Thank you for participating as well and looking forward to working with you as well.
Thank you. I'll, we'll leave the meeting now. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I want to say thank you to council for your patience, but I figured that it was going to take some time to listen to his complete presentation because I thought it would be beneficial for us as a council so that we know what's coming at us. And maybe we'll now try to figure out how to, what, what we need to do and especially with the housing shortage that we have. So.
Yeah, well.
So, okay, let's go ahead and move on. Item 4B, COVID-19 update by Executive Director Kim Gonzalez, Los Angeles, Workno County District Health Department. Ms. Gonzalez, I know you've been on, but I thank you for your patience and we'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Rico. Can you all hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me tonight. I just want to give you a COVID update. As you all know, COVID is spiking, not just locally, but across the state and across the nation. It's specifically spiking in rural communities. And you can also see that on the CDC map as well. So as of today, Colorado as a state saw twenty-six hundred cases that were reported yesterday, twenty-two new deaths reported yesterday. Eight hundred and forty-seven people are currently hospitalized with confirmed COVID. There's a hundred and twenty-three that are hospitalized as presumptive positive of COVID. And the state's positivity rate on a seven-day moving average is nine point three-one percent. Your cumulative cases across the state as a whole since we've started COVID now is one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven. We have seen nine thousand, six hundred and eighteen hospitalizations. We have seen 9,618 hospitalizations. All 64 counties have been affected. 1,272,494 people have been tested. There have been 2,333 deaths among COVID and 2,147 deaths due to COVID. Currently, as of yesterday, there have been 1,337 outbreaks in Colorado and those can be viewed on the CDPHG Colorado map. Moving on, local data, Los Ananas County as of tonight has a total of 131 cases with 67 of those active cases. That does not include the hundreds of people on quarantine that we have seen between October and now November. As of April 2nd was our first case in Los Ananas County. From April 2nd to September 30th, we only saw 28 cases. The whole, for the whole month of October, we saw 86 cases. Now, as of tonight, the total cases for November have already reached 17. Los Ananas County is also experiencing outbreaks. We have seen outbreaks with the Mount San Rafael construction site which has been resolved, Universal Trucking Company, the Park Cafe, Head Start, the City of Trinidad, Trinidad State Junior College and Honi School. That's not to mention all the individual cases that have been associated with local businesses and schools within the county as well. Locally, we have been very fortunate, we have not seen deaths, but we need to really look at the lasting consequences of those who have contracted the virus. This is a very severe virus and has severe outcomes. One in four people have involvement of either heart or lung problems after contracting COVID-19. I believe it was yesterday or today, the governor announced changes to the, the dial which is the COVID dial that we are currently on. We are currently Level 1 cautious. The new public health order shows the dial now no longer is in numbers, it's coded by colors. And it also has limited gatherings in the dial metrics to no more than 10 and no more than two households for levels blue, yellow and orange, and prohibits gatherings in red. And we currently are in blue. There are a lot of counties in the state on the dial map that are showing orange and red. The state, Los Ananas County is in, we actually should be showing a different color. The current incident rate in this county as of tonight is 445 over 100,000. In order to be in your blue level, you need to be between 0 and 75 over 100,000. In order to be even in the next level back, you need to be between 75 and 100,000. If you go to the orange level, which is before stay at home, you're 100 to 350 over 100,000. Stay at home is 350 over 100,000. As you can see, Los Ananas County is in a very critical state. Public health and the hospital are trying to do everything we can to box in this virus. We presented a mitigation plan to the state. We thought we were going to speak with the state today or this week, but apparently there's other counties that have, having issues more prioritizing than our county, which is good. So we are on hold until next week. What they're looking at is we potentially may have to move back on the dial if we cannot get our incident rate down. That is not a local decision, that is a state decision. According to the new modeling report that just came out this morning with Rachel Hurley, it's showing cases are rampantly increasing and showing no sign of slowing down across the state and we're seeing that here locally. In the spring, they saw 888 hospitalizations and that was like April. As of yesterday, there's already 800 hospitalizations. There's only 100, 1,400 beds, ICU beds available in Colorado and that, sorry, that is not just for COVID patients. That has to be for those who have heart attacks, who have car accidents, any other medical needs. One thing, as we remember, as these beds are filling up with COVID patients, we have 800 now, what is going to happen to those other patients that have medical conditions, heart attacks, brain trauma, car accidents? Where are we going to be able to put them if our hospitals are filled? That's something we, we are trying to figure out as a state. We are talking about potentially working with the governor to see if the alternate care sites could potentially be opened. They do take two weeks to open and get staffed. The, with the rapid increase, the hospitalizations is a 40 and up age population. It's not just your 60, 70, 80 year olds, it's 40 and above. The seven day average positivity rate from October 12th was at 4%. The next week was at 7% and now we're at the 9%. And if you look in the next few days, we're potentially going to be at 10 or 11%. The reproductive rate of transmission is 1.66 or closer to 1.7. They're saying the social distancing, which includes the rate of movement, people wearing masks, social distancing is at 62. In order to not exceed the hospital capacity by December, we need to get back up to at least a 70%. This disease is being seen in all ages and all ethnic groups. There's no one that is singled out. It's seen rapidly growing locally in the state, nobody is certain where its constellation, where the constellation of factors are coming from, it potentially could be coming from, of course, COVID fatigue. I have it as well, I'm tired of COVID as a public health director. Holiday surges and there, which included 4th of July. Oh God, the one in September, I'm sorry, I bring fart there. And then also, we're potentially going to see Halloween surging after the next week or so. Seasonality plays a big part in it. The environmental conditions may be more favorable for the virus now than it was during the summer. We're seeing colder temperatures, more people moving indoors. We know that transmission is most risky indoors. This is particularly more risky with crowded places who specifically do not wear masks. If seasonality is the driver part of this increase, we have to figure out a way to work harder to control this virus over the, the winter time. In order to effectively make changes, we need to look at policy interventions and behavioral changes within our communities. We have never been here before with this amount of cases. We are having a hard time keeping up. This disease transmission is widespread in the community and we need a combination of multiple things to bring it back down. These can include getting your social distancing rate back up to 70 to 80% versus the 60%. Testing to identify those that are asymptomatic in order, and symptomatic in order to get the, the virus boxed in and die out the virus. Also, testing allows us to get more people tested than just those sick people to bring that positivity rate down in the county. That is actually why we set up community testing sites. Also, interventions can be effective case investigation and contact tracing. As I heard today, the state, the state of Colorado is completely maxed out on case investigation and contact tracers. They cannot keep up with what is happening. We locally cannot keep up anymore. We are having a very hard time with what we are experiencing. We are trying to add additional contact tracers, it does take time to train staff. So, the person I am, as many of you got calls, I help my nurses out and do contact tracing. Other interventions where, is to wear a mask. Masks need to work both ways. It can't just be one person wearing a mask, it needs to be both people who are in contact with each other. We need to figure out how to reduce gathering sizes and those private gatherings that are happening. We're seeing large household transmissions which are trickling to other household transmissions. We need to figure out a way to avoid travel as much as possible, get our employees to work from home as much as possible, and of course, stay home if sick. That has been a big thing, people are still continuing to go places sick. We are seeing households spreading the virus here quite a bit. And that is actually, it's seen across the state as well and that's why the governor changed the public health order to reflect no more than 10 people and no more than two households. So that they kind of try and mitigate and box in just those two households and not spread the virus past that into the third or fourth household. The whole point of reducing workplace and getting people to work from home is so, and having 50% in, is in case you have a COVID, positive COVID case within your workplace and you have that exposure within the workplace, that crew goes home on isolation and quarantine, your facility is cleaned, your next crew can come back to work after that facility's cleaned and the crew that's exposed and isolated can work from home and the other crew can be in the office or facility to keep that business open. That is actually the purpose of the 50% working from home. Our goal as public health is to mitigate what is happening in this community. We are going to try very hard to continue to do our part as public health and work with our hospital who is doing their part in trying to mitigate and get this virus boxed in and get our, our incident and positivity rate down. We may potentially have to move back next week. We will see how the next few days goes. If we do move back, that will be a state decision and not a local decision. We just need to keep in mind, we each have the power to do the work needed to not have to go back and to contain what is happening. I think trying to get people to our testing sites, we have it open tomorrow from 1 to 3, Saturday 9 to noon. We're also trying to incentivize people to get there. We put in a free drawing for an iPad for anybody who attends both testing site days. We also have a testing site open Friday and Saturday in Horfino County to try and capture more people too. Horfino County is, because we do that county as well, is seeing a spike also. They actually are seeing five additional cases today, which is not seen lately up there. And, you know, public health, we are by county, we see, we work three counties with environmental health services. We only have a staff of 20 people, we have four public health nurses. So, just something for all of you all to think about when you're thinking about helping us figure out a way to get people to do their part. Any questions?
Let's go ahead and start taking some questions from council, if we have any. Mr. Williams, if you have a question, Mr. Gonzalez.
Mayor, I have one.
Thank you. Ms. Gregel?
I have a question for you, Kim. So, I was under the misunderstanding that we have local control over, you know, what we do locally to mitigate the damage that this virus is causing. So, from what I'm hearing you say tonight, that's not true, that we're under the state's guidance on that? We can't, we can't do anything as a community?
Correct. So we follow the governor and CDPHG and we always have as public health. We can always go stricter, we can never go less strict than the governor or the state orders.
Oh, that's, that's what I was kind of like alluding to because I'm thinking stricter right now might be the best way for us to go. Just a thought, I mean, you know, I'm not...
I love your thought, yes. And that's actually why we wanted to bring this to city council. I want you all to be aware of the situation as it's arising. We have been trying to do everything we can, our hospital and my public health nurses, I mean, there's times that they're ready to just melt and quit because there, it's, it's a lot. When you have a college that had, I think, 10 case, 11 cases now and you have over 250 people to quit, put on quarantine and you have to make those calls in addition to everything else that's happening in the community, it's taxing, it's mentally stressing. They have broke, my nurses have broken down screaming, yelling at me. It, it's been rough and that's why I jump in and help out, especially on the nights and the weekends as much as I can with my staff. I would not expect them to do anything that I would not do.
Well, you know, I, I see it, I see it and it, it's very concerning to me. You know, as a private citizen, not as a city councilman, but as a private citizen, I would say you've got to do what you've got to do in which, you know, you're the professional and I wouldn't blame you if you did something drastic because this thing is really getting out of hand and it's getting out of hand fast.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Shu, do you have any questions?
Oh, I saw it at this time, thanks.
Mr. Yvano, I have to see, have your hand raised?
Yes, Kim, and thank you for everything that you do and your concerted effort into making this the best case scenario out of the worst case scenario, I guess. You're talking about utilization of beds, the oversaturation of hospital beds continues in Colorado, but in Los Ananas County per se in Trinidad, if need be, can you or will you utilize the Los Ananas County fairgrounds as a makeshift bed unit?
So, locally, from what I know right now, we do have COVID patients in our hospital. We did have one also shipped out to Memorial. Any hospitalizations that are also outside of our county in Memorial, Parkview, therefore, still count as our, our county cases of hospitalizations even though they're not within our county. I failed to mention that and I'm sorry. So, we potentially have not looked at the fairgrounds for an alternate care site. We do have St. Mary Corwin in Pueblo as the alternate care site set up as the state. It's a 20-bed unit, but of course, that is specifically for the region and not just our county, it's for a region. So they're looking at potentially getting that open, but that's not going to be staffed with ventilators, it's not going to be the ICU bed piece of it, it's just going to be those that don't require as much care. So, we're, I'm not completely sure if we, capacity here, we will continue to ship north if we can. But I know we are trying to work with our state, I know the pharmacist next door, the hospital is trying to work with the pharmacy part of it. We are trying to get remdesivir, we do not have it. So, if people need additional treatments related to COVID and that is a treatment that... and that is a treatment, um, that is needed, we don't have that here locally yet. So that's something to, we kind of worry about as well. Um, we do also still have beds available at Spanish Peaks Regional Health Center because that's our by county we work with. Um, they do have, I believe, five beds, but I don't believe they are all ICU with ventilators. So, they continue to ship north as well as those, um, patients need additional treatment.
Any other questions, Mr. Igbonna?
No, but the remdesivir you were talking about it when I interviewed, uh, one of the local, or actually, uh, an Arizona top-notch physician is working on that. The remdesivir is a $3,500 per treatment as opposed to the hydroxychloroquine, which is only $50. The re- remdesivir is, has a mortality rate of about 12% right now. Because that's in the latter stages.
Ms. Ogilvy?
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, for everything that you're doing. Um, I'm wondering, as you're doing contact tracing and seeing outbreaks, are you learning anything about the transmission in our community and particularly dangerous situations that we can avoid?
So, we, we learn a lot. Every case is unique, um, that we deal with. Um, today was a very un- uh, one of three that we have seen homeless released and we are not able to contact them and they are positive walking your streets. So, potentially that is going to overflow into your homeless population or other homes that they go to, um, for whoever they have to stay with. Um, we're seeing it affect the whole households now, not just one individual. So, the reproductive rate is pretty high here from what Rob and I were trying to calculate. We're thinking we're more like a 3% or 4% just given how many close contacts and reproductive rate we've had within households. Um, we are seeing it brought in from hunters. We are seeing it brought in from employees that work in New Mexico, specifically one that works at a prison, one that works at a nursing home and one that works at a healthcare center, who are residents locally here. And now those families are, um, affected, whether it's, um, a few of them or the whole household. We are seeing, um, transmission from, trying to think the different ones that we're seeing too. Uh, because we tried to explain to the state if we can figure out how to box it in. Um, the largest part of this increase did come from the Park Cafe. Three employees and over 25 patrons. And now it has gone past just those patrons and employees to that second and third generation in, of infection now.
So, if, if people, um, are more, um, circumspect in, in following the directions and those, that, that spread wouldn't, would not happen? That it sounds like there's an issue with compliance with people who have been, um, diagnosed.
Correct. There has been. Um, an example of non-compliance was our Big R store who refused to close knowing they had an exposure in their facility and still allowed customers to come in and frequent the store. Um, so now that's why you're seeing, we have continued to push notice of violations. Um, if facilities choose not to work with us, just our local reporter has gotten ahold of those on specific ones and made them public. Um, so it's not just singling out those establishments. It's happening to different ones, just those are the ones that have been published. Um, we do potentially have, um, another bar exposure that we're trying to work with, with Flojo's this last Saturday that had a positive there. So, we may potentially see something from there. Um, like I said, it's, it's all over. Um, it's, there's lots of individual businesses that have been affected. Once you see two or more within that specific business in a 14-day period, that is considered an outbreak. Um, so Friday night, we did have one case with Wendy's, not an outbreak. We, they were graciously, um, working with us. Um, that staffs quarantined and the facility was thoroughly cleaned and they reopened the next day. We've also seen, of course, Head Start. You know, there's, um, Centring Financial's been affected, Duran Oil's been affected, um, Big R, um, HTA. Um, so there's quite a few businesses, um, El Rancho, Trinidad Abstract, that have seen cases. So, that's why we're trying to figure out if we can get more people tested, identify those that are positive, whether symptomatic or asymptomatic, so that we stop them frequenting businesses. Um, or if they're working and they don't realize that they are COVID-positive. Um, we just try and get a handle on this right now. It's almost like we need to do a two-week reset if we could roll back. Um, and that's, you know, something, I just don't know how to get people to comply. You know, public health is not the best well-perceived establishment because people, you know, what we had to do at the beginning, that we were required by statute in shutting down the community. So, that's why we need the help of others to help get the message out there. Um, and any recommendations that you all have would be great right now. Because we are trying to figure this out because we want to do everything we can to help this community not have to go back. And even if it's working with restaurants and making sure they have delivery and takeout options, that's safer than them going in the grocery stores right now. Because you're going into that large gathering. So, increasing and helping those restaurants get an online service, delivery service, um, something like that. But just, we just need to find unique ways for our community.
And in all events, distance and mask when you're in public.
Exactly.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That really helps me understand.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing, mayor.
Okay. Um, Kim, I do have a couple of questions. You know, with all of the places that you have, um, referenced, uh, it just seemed like it's really covering, um, the city, citywide. And, uh, do you anticipate maybe, um, a plateau in the near future? Two weeks, three weeks, a month? Any, any thought there yet?
No. So, this is what's bad. We're, we're in a spike. We're gonna continue to spike because of Halloween. I'm sure there was a lot of gatherings and private parties and, um, events that happened. Then you're gonna see the spike with those, uh, the college students coming from home from other states or other counties. Then you're going into your holiday seasons of Thanksgiving. Um, so you're gonna continue to just trend up unless we can figure out a way to get people to just re- reduce going out into the community or if they do, wear their mask. Um, and then, right now, a key piece is to get people tested to identify, um, those that are positive and box it in, get them quarantined or isolated and then, um, try and reduce that disease transmission out there.
Uh, you know, that, I'm not sure how true this is, but I understand and I've heard that there are, uh, some different strains of, uh, COVID-19. Um, and I'm just trying to, is that true?
Yes. There are two strains of COVID. There's an East Coast and a West Coast. One is more, I want to say lethal than the other, which means it's, has a higher reproductive rate. Um, which in, is that reproductive rate that is, you're seeing with those homes or you're seeing severe complications? Um, we also potentially in the next three weeks have an added, um, piece to public health and the hospital does as well. We potentially will see vaccine come in. Um, it will come in in 100-dose increments. It will be specifically, specifically for nursing homes and healthcare workers at that point. It is coming in a deep freeze, which is, I believe, negative, negative 70 degrees. So, we have to figure out how to immunize those identified within 24 hours of that vaccine coming in. Because we don't have deep freeze storage here. So, we have another, um, potential thing we have to figure out in this, for us. Um, the hospital, of course, is gonna help us on their side with our healthcare workers. We're hoping, um, that our, one of our nurses can, or two can ju- run over and do our nursing home and healthcare facility, or the nursing home and like legacy and those other facilities. But those will be the first vaccinated in the first wave. Um, the second wave potentially will not be seen until probably March of next year. But at least it's something because our goal is to figure out how to live with COVID like we live with flu. But in order to do that, you have to have a vaccine and that is gonna require like flu, probably every year to be re-vaccinated because there's going to continue to be different strains, um, as it mutates.
Okay. Uh, you know, you, you and I have had this discussion about, uh, you know, uh, businesses that are in violation. And, uh, you know, how are you handling these violations? Are they fines? Are they closures? Uh, what are you doing? Because one of the problems, uh, as like said, you and I have had a discussion. I've gone into some businesses and some people may be wearing masks. Others may not. Uh, some employees are, some employees are not and they're, well, how, uh, what are you, what are you trying to do with these type of violations?
So, what we have done, and this is where our environmental health staff has stepped up, um, in addition to the regular work they do with food inspections, childcare inspections. So, what they do is they work on facilities with complaints. Um, whether it's mask-wearing or, um, uh, too many within the facility that we see as well. So, we do two verbals. Um, after the verbal, we do do a notice of violation, which is the first written warning. Uh, second is going, second will be another second attempt with a notice of violation. Next, then we have to go towards the fine and court proceedings, um, if we can't get compliance with the second notice of violation.
And what is that, what is that file, the fine that you applied to that, uh, last violation?
Um, we didn't actually, uh, it was just a notice of violation and said if they didn't come into compliance, they potentially would be fined, which they were, they were not fined at that point because it wasn't their third strike. Um, so if they do meet that third strike, it's a $5,000 fine, which is, um, in the public health order from the state. It's the same across the state and it also is subject to one year of jail time in addition to the $5,000 fine.
Have you, have you thought of, you know, maybe making, uh, you know, I, I know we can exceed but not, you know, go lower. But like, let's say, uh, their second time that they have been identified with a violation, then maybe you just give them a small fine, just to kind of maybe wake them up, like 100 bucks or something like that? I don't know if that's, uh, within, uh, your guidelines or if that's doable or not. But it, it might wake some of these businesses up to say, I do have to do this.
Yes, that's, that's a good thought. Um, I will talk with our county attorney about that. Um, because I agree, unless it's affecting them rather than just a piece of paper, if it's affecting their pocketbook potentially, it will change their behaviors. Um, I know we have worked, um, have conversations with our district attorney because he initially will have to do the prosecution if we get to that point. Um, so we have to also, also look at that. Um, we also have to get, um, law enforcement to help us out and help identify those establishments that are operating out of compliance. Um, given that I don't have enough staff to go out there in the evenings and monitor. Um, so even that would help out. That potentially would have helped us with what we saw at the Park Cafe. I don't know if it would. But, you know, it's anything and everything. If, once we get a tip, we jump on it. But if we don't know, we can't really do anything about it.
You know, Kim, one of the things in, like I said, I've, I've mentioned this to you in the past, is that I, I believe that all businesses should have someone watching their doors. And if someone comes in without a mask, they tell them, you're not welcome. Uh, but that would be, you know, that would be up to you and the business to try to, uh, ward off some of these situations. The last thing I wanted to mention is, uh, uh, you know, the, the way that, I know Mike, uh, you went to city through city hall with, you know, fogging machines, I guess, to try to clean up some of the municipal buildings. And, uh, just to let you know, I have a, a brother-in-law who, who, that's what he does, but he lives in Seattle. That's his line of work. He cleans hospitals and with his COVID-19. He has, uh, had to invest in fogging machines. Uh, and he says, uh, in talking to him, he says, that is the best, uh, apparatus for, uh, cleaning a business. Is that what you are finding true? And the other question behind that is, have you thought, uh, maybe you have a budget? And I'm not sure what the cost of the fogging machine would cost, where you could loan out to businesses if necessary?
We want to at the church.
Yes. Um, Robin Skyes, who is our environmental health director, has said that those fogger machines are very effective in addition to wiping down those high-touch services with the proper, um, CDC requirements of, um, chemicals and dilution with those chemicals. Um, if you ever chat with her, she is up to speed on what chemicals and what dilutant for every chemical. Um, she has looked into the different foggers as well because we saw a lot of the different schools between the two counties had different styles of foggers and different brands, um, which use different chemicals as well. Some said they had to sit on the surface for 30 minutes, some, um, less than that. But also the key piece is wiping down those high-touch surfaces in addition to fogging. Um, I don't know, it probably would not be a good business for public health, but maybe city and county to look at those foggers to rent out. Um, we really don't have enough staff to keep track of something like that. Um, but I think it's a great idea, given there's so many businesses affected and I don't think they ha- know or can get those companies from Pueblo or locally to come in and clean. But if they had the availability of a machine like that, um, and then they're just given the proper information on how to use it and what needs to be done, I think that's an amazing idea.
Okay.
Because it's gonna continue to hit all the businesses.
Well, that's all the questions that I have. Uh, you know, Kim, uh, thank you very much for.
I have, I have one more, uh, something to contribute, mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, I, okay, go ahead.
Hey, Kim, this is Aaron Williamson. I potentially, um, well, we'll need to do some checking into this, but I potentially have access to liquid nitrogen. If we could, um, secure a dur, I don't know if that would help your storage of, um, vaccine vials. I, I can't imagine it wouldn't. As liquid nitrogen has a lower, uh, lower storage point than negative 70. But if that's something that you're interested in, please contact me.
I will. If we get to that point, I will definitely get ahold of you. Thank you for that.
Yeah. Well, thank you for reaching out on that. I think that's very, very important. So, uh, thank you for that. Uh, like I said, Kim, is there, are there any questions that council has come up with?
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Thank you, mother.
Thank you for having me. And I apologize, I could not get my camera on for some reason. Um, but I just want to thank all of you and, um, please let me know or reach out if you have any suggestions that we could do going forward. We are open to ideas, so please, um, reach out at any time.
Okay. All right. Thanks again. Let's go ahead and now move forward with Article 5, the consent agenda. 5A approval of the regular meeting minutes of October the 20th, 2020. Five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of October the twentieth, twenty twenty, and special meeting minutes of October the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Item B of the bills for one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Item C, approval of payroll, October the thirty-first, twenty twenty, through November the thirteenth, twenty twenty. The amount of three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and two dollars and ninety-eight cents. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second, second.
Okay, the only question, thing I had, and it was just a minor typo, is on page three of the regular meeting minutes, it says, "he attending," and it should be, "he attended." So that's the only thing that I saw, just a minor typo. So with just that minor change, we've got first and a second, call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Abstain on A and approve B and C.
Williamson?
Yep.
Rico?
Yes. Item six, public hearings, we have none. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, we do have one, eight A. Resolution committing to a seven-year program for the inspection and maintenance of curb cuts and sidewalks for accessibility within the city. Have a motion, please?
All over.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
I guess Mr. Beach, is Mr. Beach on, or Mike, do you want to cover that for Mr. Beach?
Tom's on.
Mayor, I'm here.
Okay.
Mayor, Mayor, Member, Council, Tom Beach, Public Works. This is just a, I say just, it's, they're flippant, that's not true. This is a requirement under our settlements that we have for ADA violations that we proclaim that we will do a, every seven years do a survey and study, make a report for all of our curb cuts and sidewalks in the city. And this is just formalizing that requirement, if you will. So it's something we need to do, and it just needs to be in form of a resolution. Court, Otter and I decided that a resolution would suffice for this. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Mr. Williamson, any questions?
I have none. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tom.
Ms. Riego?
No, sir.
Mr. Shu?
No, none. Thank you.
Mr. DeBono?
No questions at this time, sir.
Hey, Ms. Ogletree?
No questions.
Mr. Goodall?
No questions.
I don't have any questions. Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item nine, council reports, starting off with Mr. Williamson, do you have anything to report?
None at this time, Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Riego?
I just, I had my main historic Main Street meeting last week. And they're still going to try and, and work on a hometown holidays with the business decorating and the home decorating. Can't do it like we did yet last year, but the ladies are trying to make a new normal for everybody concerned, so that's all I have. We didn't meet with Shoshana Lou from CDOT. And she's, she was very informative. Mayor Rico, I'm sure, is going to report on that one as well. But she said there are grants available for signage, not a lot of money. I think she said fifty thousand dollars. It's called Revitalize Main Street. So we might be able, we were thinking about maybe talking to the CDOT about putting some signs up by five points off of that exit coming into town. Because there's no direction, people that come in don't know that there's a pretty vital downtown, just a couple of blocks away. So that's about all I have.
Okay, Mr. Shu?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. DeBono?
Not, not tonight, Mr. Rico.
Okay, Ms. Ogletree?
Today I attended the Space to Create Oversight Board meeting, and the discussion that I was part of had to do with looking for different members, new members for that board and/or the Creative District Board. And it reminded me that I ran into Garrett Watson, who works for the paper recently. And he mentioned that he thought with all the new people coming to town, it might be a good idea for someone from the city to sit down with him and go over what all the openings are and what those boards do so that he could do a feature article about that and get the word out about the boards that we need people to, to sit on. I thought that was a great idea.
Could, could I add one comment to that?
Yeah, go ahead, Wong.
I think it's a great idea. I think we should do a feature on the boards. I will, however, say that one of our rules is that you have to live in the city for a year before you can sit on any of these boards. Yeah, I want to, unless I am incorrect here, but I, to be on a city board, you have to live within Trinidad city limits for a year. As for the Creative District Board, you do not, because it's not a city board. But we actually just got four applications for that one that will probably tap us out on the amount of members we can have on that board. But yes, we are still looking for some for the Space to Create Commons boards.
That, that's a really good point, Wally. I remember when I first moved here, I was looking for something to do. And, and I remember learning that I had to wait a year. But it was nice to know that there were options after I'd been here for a year, and I did that as soon as I could. So it's good to get that information out.
Okay, Mr. Goodall?
So planning's still going forward for the two-hundredth anniversary of the Santa Fe Trail celebration that's coming up, we're in hopes that things will mellow out in time. We do have an online auction that's coming up, and we are seeking donations. So if you've got anything to donate for the auction or would like to make donations, you can contact Marty, myself, that'd be great. That's all I have.
Why don't you cover, because I know you were on that, I was going to report, but like, why don't you report on that Fishers Peak Work Group that we attended?
So the Fishers Peak Work Group was a great deal. We had, it seems like we had a few, time was short, but with introductions and everything else. We broke out into groups and, let me get to my notes, that'll probably be helpful. Well, thanks, Mayor. Apparently, I don't even know which book I was in. We had a really good meeting, first meeting off. I know the next meeting will be much more accomplished. We didn't have a lot of time. We spoke about things, community involvement, ways to reach out to the community, possibly using, like we did for community input on the consumption clubs type of setting with COVID, maybe a way to get the public more involved. So we had some really good ideals that came up. And I ain't finding no notes, but I think that kind of touches on, Mayor, what we, what we, we're talked about, community involvement and getting, keeping the community involved.
Yeah, you're correct. You know, there was just some generalization and just trying to figure out how to come up with some ideas to reach out to, you know, all the members of the community, whether they're, you know, students, whether they're adults, seniors, all the like. So that was pretty interesting. Also, I think, well, not, what we, I met with the Fishers Peak Partners, those five of us, that was, that was the City of Trinidad, Trust for Public Land, NIT Conservancy, GOCO, and CPW. We had a meeting and just to kind of see how we are doing, if we're staying on track with the original ideas as to when this whole project started. And we're kind of in the agreement that, yes, we are on track. We know it's going to take some time to get it all done. But we're going to meet periodically, just as partners, to make sure that, you know, we are all aware of what's happening. And if anything changes, we can try to address it and try to get the proper people to address any issues that we do have. So it's moving along, as you all know, and some of you attended the sneak peek last Friday. The governor was here, they had the, I want to thank Ms. Ogletree who were there, and Mr. Ball, you were there, and so was Karen. But anyway, and Mike, Mr. Valentine, he was there as well. And it was, they had quite a few, I thought, they had a lot of people. I didn't think there were going to be that many people, but there were quite a few people there. But it was just a beginning of the process and of the opening. So we, it is open now to the public for limited access. And hopefully that sometime next year, we'll have more access to the property. So we're hopeful. They've done a tremendous job, as those of you that were up there. Well, you could see they've done since he was up here when the governor was here last time. They've done a heck of a lot of work.
And those that, of us that were there, Mayor, got early access to the Trinidad Lake State Park swag and bought T-shirts and hoodies and hats. And we have bumper stickers and decals on our windows. So if you wasn't there, you missed out on the early chance to buy brand-new swag, which I did participate in.
Yeah, I bought, I bought a hat and I bought T-shirts for myself and something for my wife, so it was great. Karen, I guess Karen's showing one of the things that we bought.
There you go. It's real cool.
Aaron, you know, one of the things I wanted to mention, the last, at the work session, I brought up the thing about community ready. And I asked permission to try to put together something with somebody, and Aaron agreed to take, and she and I met. So Aaron, why don't you kind of give us an idea as to what we discussed?
We met at City Hall and talked for about an hour about different ideas that are being batted around for Trinidad to get ready for what is beginning to happen here. And there is so much that it's, it's like a tidal wave. And so we want to, we're, I'm, I'm starting having conversations with people in the community that are just informal conversations about ideas that they have concerning amenities that we need, services that we need, just a general approach to that. As I was listening to the approach, to the presentation by Allegiance Coal, I was thinking, this adds another huge factor into all of this discussion. And at some point, we, we are really going to need to sit down with our city manager and talk about priorities to make sure that what the city can do, it's doing and is ready to do, because this is a, this is a critical moment that we're having.
And one of the, like I said, one of my ideas behind this was, you know, she's going to get, it's kind of a loose group that's going to help just maybe a few meetings, three or four meetings, however they, whatever they decide. But the idea there is to take that information, and then they will, we can get that passed into the master planning process for Fishers Peak, because it all will come together. And matter of fact, I mentioned that to one of the CBs, the CPW people that were there on Friday, what we were doing. And he thought that was really a good idea, because it kind of brings it all together. Because usually on, whenever we have grants out there and the master planning process, it's pretty much on a very high level. A lot of times, most of the time, it doesn't get down into specifics. And this will try to help us, you know, narrow down into some specifics as to what type of amenities the community will need to, for people that are going to be coming to Trinidad for recreation, or, you know, like we talked with the mine, the employees, new citizens coming to our community. So it just kind of will work together with that, so we'll incorporate that information so that it'll, it probably will help them.
I wanted to throw, Mayor, excuse me, I wanted to throw in, I talked with Wally, and I don't know if Wally wants to jump in too. And he brought up something important for us to take into account in, in putting that kind of a, a response together, which is that there was a marketing survey of some kind done not too long ago, I believe funded by Main Street Grant, where we got information from local businesses about things that they think we needed at that time to improve the business environment. And then additional data came in when Wally asked for some input as we were preparing to administer the assistance during COVID. So I don't know if Wally wants to jump in at this point or anything, but I thought that was really good to know that we actually do have some hard data, as well as the impressions of people in town to use to fortify that report.
You know, what we might do is, what we might do is maybe have this on a work session, or we could bring it out a little bit deeper. Why don't we do that? We can get Wally in. That'd be a good thing to do. The other thing I wanted to do, mention about is the Southwest, Southwest Chief Commission. And Mike and I listened in on that last week, and where they used our, I forget what it was that they, Mike, you might mention that. But anyway, they, what did they use, Mars? They used ours.
They used our, our grant portal. They, they did not have access to, to the government grants. And, and we, we sponsored that, that request. And luckily, they were successful. I think now we step back and let them manage the grants, so.
Yeah, and what that was, is the five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar grant is going to be used for service development and simulation, plan for the Frontline Passenger Rail from Pueblo to Fort Collins. The other thing that we heard about, and I knew about this because from the week before in our regular meeting with the Southwest Chief, is that Colorado is supposed to get one point two billion dollars for, I think, the rail systems in Colorado. Right after the meeting that we, Mike and I listened in on, I talked to Randy Grauburger, who's our director. And I asked him what he thought, if he had any idea of what our commission was going to get. And there's some other stuff that I discussed with him, I'm not going to discuss that now. But there's a good, you know, some additional possibilities for taking, hopefully, some of that money and using it down from Pueblo to Trinidad, instead of all of it going north. So that was, that was pretty interesting. And like I said, I know that Karen had mentioned that we had met with Shoshana Lou. And I'm going to defer to Mike on that, because when we met with, with her, I deferred to Mike and her to have the major, majority of the discussion on that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Since you led off with that, it was a very productive meeting, meeting with the Director of CDOT, Shoshana Lou. We talked about basically all our exits here, exits here in Trinidad. She is focused on, on Exit Eleven. The, the initial estimate was eleven million. I think as I speak to CDOT engineers, that it's going to be thirteen million. But she's funneled another two million into studying all the exits through the TPR. They're, they're going to be looking at studying all those exits. We went back in history a bit to explain what we lost as a city, you know. Couple of exits got taken away. One at Exit Thirteen A is just basically a half an exit. It doesn't have the, the full diamond interchange and, because of safety reasons. But it was very productive and, and a good, good thing. So the other thing I have to report, of course, everybody knows. The other thing I have to report, of course, everybody knows that, uh, City Hall is closed down, pretty much, um, everybody is, uh, is on a fourteen-day quarantine. We lost pretty much the second-floor staff and part of our utility billing. Uh, we've got those people that are on, uh, symptom watch, doing yeoman's work, covering City Hall. Um, it is closed, but public can access, call, email, we're, we're a bit understaffed down there. We've got people working from home when we can. Um, the library is shut down to, uh, drop-offs only, and, and we're working through that. Um, the Welcome Center i- is closed. Uh, we figured, you know, one, one staff member there is quarantined, so, uh, that's closed, and we're utilizing a staff member to help in the utility billing. You know, the tourist season is kind of waned a little bit, so, uh, that's there, and, uh, yeah, so, um, working from home is a tough thing to do. Uh, I admire anybody who can do this, it's my, it's a couple days here, and trying to keep up, and, um, boy, I, I need stuff that's at work and in getting access. Uh, James is working hard to get us all, uh, access to the drives down there at work, so, um, you know, uh, just ask the public, bear with us, uh, we'll get to you, um, and, uh, that's all I have, Mayor, Council, unless there's questions.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Downs, do you have anything to report?
Mayor, thank you, Mayor and Council members. I don't have anything, but listen, I was going to ask you, um, if you would consider, and I'm sorry, it's going to hurt for me to hear, if you would consider, um, continuing the, uh, the executive session to another night. Um, I want to, if, if this has gone on a long time, and I want to say it's not like I participated in that, of course I do not, but this has gone on quite a while, and also to record, somebody would have to record this on their phone. And so, because we have, of course, quarantines for, uh, most city staff, so, um, if you guys still want to do that, I certainly understand, but it seems like that might be a helpful suggestion for you tonight. A, it would be easier to record at a later time when, uh, when people are in City Hall, and also, uh, just out-of-time constraints. I just offer that for you, your suggestion, I mean, for your consideration.
Okay, uh, I guess, Mr. Valentine, being that we're going to be talking to you, uh, I, I don't have an issue with that, I can understand Mr. Downs' concerns and, and question. Like I said, there's no, I don't have anything really pressing to ask you, uh, just an opportunity to talk to you. Uh, however, what we could do, uh, in lieu of, of this, would be to, uh, maybe make some time and have a phone conversation directly with you, uh, that might be a way to do this as well. And then, would, how, how does that sound to you, Mr. Valentine?
Well, that's, that's fine, Mayor. I appreciate Les, uh, speaking up. I didn't wear a tie. Uh, I'm here at home in pajama bottoms, you can't see. Actually, uh, Audra was texting me back and forth, uh, wondering how we were going to record this, and can I record it from my phone, and I'm not technically savvy enough to do that, so, um, I, uh, I would entertain, I think, after this, uh, fourteen-day quarantine, and hopefully, uh, everything happens where we can get somebody back into City Hall, we can record it. It'll still be virtual, but, uh, I think, uh, if you give us a couple weeks, that's fine. Um, I'm always available if, uh, City Council needs to call me and, uh, you know, let me know what's going on, what, uh, what I need to do, if I'm not, uh, doing what you think I should be. I, I definitely agree with reviews. Uh, it helps both sides, not only to, you know, maybe, uh, I thought I was doing what you wanted, um, all along, and you're thinking, why isn't he doing that? Um, so, I think a review is good, but if we could, uh, give us a couple weeks, I think, uh, it would be better.
Okay. Now, let's do this. I'll have to go ahead and bring that forward, and then I'd like to have someone make a motion, however we want to move on this. So, item eleven, executive session, with, with then for a discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section twenty-four dash X four oh two two F, and not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of other matter in open session, any member of this body or any elected official of the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or an elected official or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of matters personal to particular employees. City Manager, a six-month review, could I have a motion of how to move forward with this, or how do you want to handle it?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion at this time that we move this executive session to our meeting on the seventeenth of November.
Okay, at the earliest, okay. A second?
Second.
Okay. Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item twelve, adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Yay.
Second?
So moved. I moved, we adjourned.
Okay. Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Riego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And I want to thank, uh, Council, you know, I know that we had a very light agenda, but the two items that we had, which was the mine and, uh, and, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Gonzalez's information, uh, was very informative and something I think that we needed to hear, so. Uh, thank you for the patience, and like I said, we've been at this for two hours and twenty minutes. Um, let's go and take our pajamas bottoms off now, Mike, and... Okay, good luck. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.